Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to our regular scheduled council meeting. We do have a couple of proclamations to give out this evening. Okay, we have one proclamation. Every once in a while, we're fortunate to recommend some of the great folks that we have here in Long Beach, and tonight is one of those nights.
The city of Long Beach has a great system in place for the after-hours for protection of the beach. We have an alert system that the fire department can send out. It's almost an immediate alert to the, took myself, to the volunteers, to the lifeguards, notifying them of a potential drainage. We also do patrol the beaches, and on this particular night, a car came in for a person in the water in distress, when it turned out to be an attempt at suicide. Firefighter FitzMartin, or with police officer Corbin, and police officer Primrose went into the water, was able to grab the subject and execute them from the water at great risk to himself. So the city council must desire us to recognize that attention and as proclamation. Unfortunately, Officer Corbin and Primrose are only remaining, but Firefighter FitzMartin, please study.
Thank you, Commissioner. I just want to, a couple Fridays ago, while many of us at the Commissioner said were enjoying a beautiful afternoon, the City of Long Beach elected me thanks to one of our volunteer firefighters. Thanks to the quick response of firefighter Justin FitzMartin, together with Police Officer Corbin and Primrose, we were able to actually save this precious place and get the individual to help if needed. So I want to invite our chief sub, as well as firefighter FitzMartin, to present him with the proclamation. I think I'll point out that firefighter FitzMartin had the best quote, I think, ever in the Herald of the Vikings, which I think all of us will remember. I just want to read, "Whereas the City of Long Beach wishes to recognize those individuals and organizations that have contributed positively to the people and community at large, whereas the City of Long Beach does desire the public to acknowledge, volunteer firefighter at BMT, Justin FitzMartin, in recognition of his actions, attended the Avenue Beach in the afternoon of Friday, September 21st, 2018, in which firefighter Mr. FitzMartin, Police Officer Michael Corbin, and Police Officer Patrick Primrose were able to safely rescue and revive an unresponsive man floating in the water, and transported him to South Mountain Community Hospital, Long Beach Emergency Department in critical condition. Therefore, the City Council and the City Manager, in recognition of his exemplary service to the communities, proudly present this proclamation to Justin FitzMartin." And it's signed by Council President Aramo Niceville, Council Member Bendo, Council Member Mandel, Councilwoman Moore, and the city manager, Michael Tagg.
Beach, held on Wednesday, October 3rd, 2018, at 7:00 PM. Number one call, Councilmember Bendo.
President.
Councilmember Mandel.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Vice President Diamond.
Here.
President Aramo.
Here.
And the registered president's back, the city manager, Michael Tagg, and Corporation Council, Robert Excesis, without a signature.
Vice President Diamond, would you?
The United States of America, as to the Republic of which it stands, on my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Once again, I'd just like to thank everyone for being here and for our rather short, agitated evening. But we'll start with the city manager report.
Yes, the Army Corps has completed beach renourishment and piled dry water for the doom walkovers within the city limits. Upon completing renourishment in middle beach and central gap in only once, the core will return to build up the dunes before the doom walkover next year may start. The timing of the Army Corps' return to Long Beach is yet to be determined. Please check www.longbeachny.com for updates. The AOH 29th Annual Irish Daydream Festival is this Saturday, October 6th, from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM, raining to wash down. The parade steps off Washington Boulevard and West Park Avenue at 11:00 AM, and proceeds to West Beach Street in the West End. There will be no parking on West Beach Street between New York Avenue and Connecticut Avenue from 6:00 AM until 7:00 PM on Saturday. West Beach Street will be closed, traffic at 9:00 AM. The festival will end at 5:00 PM, and West Beach Street will be cleared by 6:00 AM. The West End bus loop will run on West Park Avenue during the festival. For festival, we'll be helping candy places Saturday and Sunday from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. There'll be crafts, vendors, the following Friday, Saturday, carousel, pumpkin patch, petting zoo, music, hayride, and more. The costume parade begins at the Redfield at 12:00 noon. There is still time to submit pictures for the 2019 city calendar. We are looking for pictures that depict Long Beach in unusual way, especially for the winter months, holidays, and Long Beach events. If you have a photo which you would like to be have considered for inclusion in the 2019 calendar, please send any horizontal, high-resolution pictures to longbeachevents@longbeachny.com.
Okay, on the calendar. And what is the resolution authorizing the city manager to enter term agreement for long administration services?
Yes, we started a longer trade-in services in 2011, when we had 1,140 false alarms. The program is designed to get people that have faulty alarms, to get them repaired properly, so that police officers aren't racing to these houses, exposing themselves to both the dangers of responding to a alarm, and the possible complacency of having so many false alarms. In 2017, we went from 1140 to 617, and so far, to date, in 2018, we have 471. The fees are all remaining the same as they had since 2011. If you register your alarm, the first two false alarms, you get only a warning, and then penalties start to kick in. We have also an appeal process that most newness parties don't have, to try to make it as fair as possible, and this has been a very, very successful program for the city.
Okay, any questions from the council? Any comments or questions over the public? Okay, seeing no hands, now, next item.
I am sure the resolution authorizes publication of a notice of public hearing and an application for all street parking requirements that forms 167 A's parking area in the street toward Hurson Park. This item is a publication only hearing will be held October 6th, 7:00 PM. Okay, so, I am, what is the resolution authorizing the city manager to enter term agreement for a long administration service?
What would be the option besides?
I will.
Yes.
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 I am, two, is the resolution authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing and application for all street parking requirements that forms 167 A's parking area in the street toward Hurson Park. Just moving down to this item.
I will.
Yes.
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 City manager's multi-personal reports filed by the city court will be motioned closed immediately.
I will.
I will.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, we move on to our quick little section of the meeting. Everyone receives three minutes of uninterrupted time. As we always ask, we ask everyone to be respectful and maintain the form. Kathleen O'Leary. Good evening.
Kathleen O'Leary, Long Beach. I want to speak again about the mortgage control registry. Specifically, I would like to speak about to the Corporation Council. I sent this article around to selected members, including Commissioner Tagg and Mr., I'm sorry, Commissioner.
No.
Okay, corporate council. And basically, what's happening in Jersey is, the county, Gloucester County, has 18 towns which use this default registry, okay, for mortgages. And right now, four towns are being sued in addition to the vendor that runs the registry. So I guess my question to corporate council is, why are you letting Long Beach be exposed to litigation? We already know this is going on one state over. So it's actually investors that purchase tax liens that are closing, have a rate for closing sold on homes, and they're suing. One of them says he doesn't want to pay the two brands that this company and the towns assigned for mortgage and default. So we're leaving ourselves open. Long Beach is leaving, being left open to get sued by multiple people. You know, we're getting, these are, you know, tax lien people. You've been a homeowner suing you, you've been a bank suing you, and so forth. And again, like we established the last session, there's less than five zombie houses with people living in them. It's basically a money grab to get revenue from people who are losing their jobs, missing one mortgage payment, and then going into default, the way the banks run it now. So to me, that's a money grab. And my question is, is straight to the corporate council.
Sure. Ms. O'Leary, we did research that thoroughly before, before the items introduced onto the agenda, and we found that it presented an acceptable level of risk. Mainly because the challenge in that case is based on Jersey state law. So at this point, we're not concerned. If something changes, we will have the ability to amend and adopt the law as needed.
What is it in particular to Jersey state law that's different from us?
It's something in that state law, basically tax bases, whereby basically, they're saying that the state law does not permit this extra fee to the taxpayer, but it's unique to the Jersey state law. And right now, there was something happening, it's just an allegation, it hasn't been substantially required to get, it's only an allegation.
Well, there's four towns in court right now.
That does happen.
That's not just an allegation.
Well, no, that's, that's, that's a lawsuit, it's a serious allegation.
All right, it's a man, okay, but they're not, they're serious. It's not a trivial, what do they call it, a trivial lawsuit. There's four out of 18 towns that are getting sued.
We'll be watching.
Yeah, one thing I wanted to suggest, I know Senator Ford wore up using the New York State Registry. I believe that New York State would have the legal authority to impose fees, as opposed to a private company. And basically, I think it's like an IT thing, you would just need to hook into the New York State database, see who they find, what is it called, zombie home, and hook in by that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Leary.
Good evening. John Dean, Arizona Avenue, Long Beach. I want to first recognize and thank Vanessa Moore for taking the time to come out and actually experience and see what was going on with the traffic, and thank you, Vanessa. Small note, Mr. Bendo indicated me walking out last time telling me that there's trouble making left-hand turns from Park Avenue onto his street, and I said, well, thank you, but it's not hard to understand that if you're having trouble turning your car, there's also difficulty in people walking across, as well as people making turns from side streets or into sidewalks onto that street. Now, just to clarify what I'm asking, is to have stop signs be put on the two-way streets, one east and west direction, to have crosswalk indications on the streets, which we have elsewhere in the streets, to have the respective parking signs on the road, kind of, put up yield possession signs. And basically, that's it. However, I will say that I did get a call, which I'm not sure who gave it to me, they gave me number call, and they said, well, just call this phone. But I called that number, turned out to be somebody named Ryan, which I now remember as Lieutenant Ryan, Traffic Division. I called that number, I didn't get a response. I let the voice account, never got a call back. Last Wednesday, I decided to come, because I wanted to check that, and I didn't know who that was. I come into the manager's office and try to clarify what was supposed to be there. I was stopped by a guard who called up, and he said, no, just go to the traffic. And I said, unfortunately, every time we go to the traffic division, they said they can't do anything except through the manager's division. So Traffic Division sent me to the manager's office, manager's office sent me to the traffic division. And I said, basically, just send me a yo-yo. I said, but, since you asked me, I'm gone. I went to the traffic division, and they told me that this line was not available. I said, well, when is he available? We don't know. I said, doesn't he have a phone? Doesn't he have kids to text? Is he ever scheduled? No. Eventually, one of the two ladies walked to the back and was talking to somebody, I don't know who it was, and then this other person came out, I don't actually know who it is. Regardless, I'll say this, a very aggressive man told me that they were not going to call and not going to text, and I just had to move. I said, well, yeah, I'm accustomed, just to provide service to them. I was informed by that person, said I'm not accustomed, said I'm just a resident. Started to say, I'm just a resident, just invite that to the good service. I left the traffic division.
Your time's expired.
What?
Your time's expired.
Okay, now, I'm going to take one second, and I'm going to finish that. I came back into the manager's office, I explained my case again, they said, give me your phone number. I said, every time I call there, I'm going to call. This young man came out and said, that he studied all the accidents in Long Beach, and that there were more important intersections than mine intersection. Let me tell you something, I'm currently assaulted, requesting safety for the residents in the West End, requesting parity for residential area to the rest of Long Beach where there is traffic control. Thank you.
I'll just ask Commissioner Tagg to respond to our child concerns on Park Avenue throughout the West End.
Well, according to the manual, you're on control lines, it's improper to make stop signs with traffic lights. Either you have one or the other, and that street is controlled by traffic lights, the volume of traffic is too great, that stop sign on every two-way street, which is partially every 210. So it could traffic and crime, let's say, and so, it's been almost quite too much trouble when they do turn usually, because that street's covered by traffic. So if there was someone trying to cross, like, well, maybe a kid's cross three, not in the street, but I will get a hold of the gentleman, and have him assist me.
Okay, are there any other options? Because I had the opportunity to visit the area, and there were many children who were coming on the school buses, and they were waiting, trying to figure out when it would have the opportunity to cross the street. There were also teenagers who were on bikes, and they were struggling in terms of trying to get across the street. Then they also obviously saw a lot of people who were in their cars, who were struggling to make that turn, and there were a lot of cars that were speeding, coming up and down West Park Avenue.
It is a problem, because you're going to take six lanes of traffic, and you're reducing it to four, once you cross New York Avenue. So that is a challenge to handle that amount of traffic with just two westbound and two eastbound lanes. But I will tell Ryan and maybe Commissioner Remen, Orando, who is an engineer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, please, here in Long Beach, New York. I better just re-estate it. The frustration of Long Beach residents towards the city leadership is at an all-time high. The corruption, good old boys network, side deals, act now, ask for permission later culture must end, and end immediately. The question all Long Beach residents must ask themselves unemotionally, and with great thought, is our beloved city by the sea well-run and managed by those elected to serve the residents, taxpayers, and merchants? The clear and adequate response is a resounding no. The administration has lost the confidence of the people who voted them into office. These leaders were given an incredible opportunity to effectively affect positive change in the lives of those that care most deeply for the short and long-term well-being of our city. Every action by the most recent and current administration elicits self-advocacy, self-interest, and favors for those who offer reciprocal benefits. I ask my fellow residents and taxpayers and merchants, is this administration to be trusted? Are they holding up their end of the trust? Are they being held accountable for their choices, decisions, and actions, and in some cases, inaction? I can spend hours outlining examples of greed, corruption, lies, backroom deals, and overall failures to live up to the values we expect from those managing our city. More often than not, lack of process morphs into lack of integrity in the decisions made by our leaders. These are just a few examples, no city manager or controller, separation payments, bad act room or development deals, no accountability or supervision, lack of transparency, and a big failure communication overall. Well, on the man's end, we, the taxpayers, residents, and merchants, deserve more than what is currently happening within the confines of city law. There are two issues that must be addressed today, not tomorrow, not next week, or next month, but today. The first is to clean up the mess left behind by former city manager Jack Shearman. We must have an answer to the questions regarding all those separation payments and overall fiscal integrity. Second is to be transparent of the process, sense of urgency to fill the vacant seat of the city manager and controller positions. We need a person we can trust, who can train out the ills of the past, one who can undertake a complete overhaul of city law, and one who is not beholden to anyone or any party. Long Beach is a special place. The city manager's position is one to be desired and led with passion by the next person. Let's make sure we are doing everything possible to attract highly qualified candidates who want to be here, who believe in the values of the residents he or she serves, and a leader who is tough enough to stand up for what is right regardless of politics. If indeed.com is not getting the hiring process for city manager moving, then someone needs to take charge and find other methods. Put together a search committee, find out, reach out to the ICMA, they have access to city managers across the country. Hire a headhunter. We saved enough city managers' salary for almost the last 10, 11 months to cover that cost. The answer is not what we have in-house, or what we have in years, the answer lies in someone who's not connected. I just have one, two lines. But wants to connect with the residents, a proper, a person with proper credentials and qualifications and experience, someone who has, has or wants to put roots here, not those who are, the city is a stepping stone for their careers. There is no place for politics, for parties, or the leaders in this process, and time to clean up this mess and get this busy right into the sinking ship. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. What's your name? Liz?
Hi, this is my name, my name is Emma Stoney, and I live at 175 West Broadway. It is a senior building. I'm getting even to, we are recently been told that we are going through a, what they call a RAB conversion. Are you familiar with RAB? Yes or no?
Yes, unfortunately, we don't have anything to do with housing.
I know you don't, but the last thing I want to really be familiar with it.
Yes.
Okay. So you don't need me to explain to you what RAB conversion is? You know what it is?
Yes.
Okay, all right, then I'm going to ask you a question, all right? You don't have anything to do with housing, I know, but as elected officials, you have to have some concerns about it, because as seniors, we voted you in, and you must care about us. And that is a question. Am I correct?
I'm not an elected official, number one. Number two, I do care about all residents.
About the seniors, am I correct?
All residents.
All right, and if they do go ahead with the conversion, which is not bad, if it's done correctly, but it's being rushed into it, and if it's rushed into it, and if it's done incorrectly, we are stuck with something that may displace seniors that have lived in Long Beach for their entire life. And is that fair? I don't think it is. And you have an opportunity now, because you're electing a new city manager, and you do have something to do with the seniors, because the city manager is the one that appoints the board. And the city manager will be able to appoint a board that doesn't have any kind of agenda but to care about what happens to the senior citizens, and be able to appoint a person that goes on the board, because the board is going, there are a number of seats that are going to be up-sued, and they can appoint a person that has nothing else on their agenda but to be sure that the people now that live in housing will be protected under the new conversion to the RAB system if they go ahead with it. I know they have to do something, because the new Trump administration is cutting back on the money they get and they give to HUD. I know that. But it has to be done correctly, and you have an opportunity to help us. And I think it's your responsibility as the board and as the people who, you're politicians, you can't just forget us.
So I think the council can have a conversation about what's happening. I don't know if we're all fully clear about what a RAB conversion... I don't know if we're all fully clear about what a RAD conversion is. But obviously, we want to advocate any way we can to protect the seniors and protect those that are already living in the housing. Did you hear something?
Yeah, I'm gonna echo what President Aramo said. I think we all feel strongly about, I don't think there's anyone on the council who wouldn't want to take whatever steps are necessary. I, for one, don't have a background in what this RAD conversion is. I don't know if all the other members of the council do, but I'm just gonna ask that we get some sort of analysis over the next couple of days so that we can be prepared to respond appropriately to you. But I don't think there is any question from many members of this council that protecting housing and senior housing is something that's a priority. I think we've taken steps as a council in order to ensure that that's happened, whether it's just believing in the continuation of programs or ensuring that projects continue for our seniors. So I think if that's clear, whatever steps are necessary we can take to ensure that housing is protected. I think that, I don't want to speak for anybody else, but I think that we would all take those steps to ensure that that is taken care of.
Yeah, I just want to echo Councilwoman Donde's statement and just say that in times past, the Long Beach Housing Authority did provide a report to members of the council. And we did this when President Torres was leading us. And so I'm going to plus that in working with President Aramo that we could request a sometime meeting with the Long Beach Housing Authority Rad Board so that we'll all have the same information.
That would be great.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Yeah, we have, there's a lot of seniors here and a lot of them want us to come up and talk. But we don't want to inundate you because we know your power is unlimited. But we really want to-
Hope we can sell the advocate in. Thank you. With that, Mr. President Aramo, Mr. Councilman, you and you should give me a camera to limit. I believe I will be watching the commentary related tonight on our screen and I'll be following the council. Thank you, Governor Oramo. Beth Spira?
Yes. Good evening, thank you all for being here and listening because I know you are directly involved in RAD. And I become pretty sure that I can never think in terms of senior housing. Because you're young, vital, and if you're not very young, you're vital. And you wouldn't be doing what you do. And I want to thank you all for that. And this is not a request for why have you done what I've done question. This is a plea because it is urgent and we all love all of you. I have lived here fifty-one years, raised a child here, have a lovely house here, and I expected to find myself in a city of housing. But there I am. And there anybody could be in the same way that anybody who never thought they would end up in a hospital bed for the chronic illness suddenly is. Things happen like that. And what I am asking is not to develop an interest in something. You don't have to be involved, but to keep in mind that those of us who live in Long Beach who took a really concerned interest in who we vote for, and a great many of us vote for all of you sit where you're sitting because we don't throw flyers away, we read, we research, we're interested in the people that sit there. And we make pretty good decisions a lot of the time. And so what I'm asking as a plea, because this is urgent, this is not some petty little thing. They wouldn't have called us up here to the sixth floor just to pay. And you don't have to be directly involved. Long Beach is directly involved and you represent Long Beach in the best possible way we're able. We help you, we're asking you for your help in this way. If you are smart enough to do what you do, and obviously you are, you can detect slum. And if you notice anything going on that doesn't hit you, but I am counting on each and every one of you to not ignore it because it's not in your profile, but to make sure that that question that's in your mind goes to the right person who can do something about it and help us. Because one day, you will all be seniors, hopefully. And I thank you all. Thank you.
Ms. Allison Glancheck?
Feel free to share what's really interesting. Just wanted to let you know that it's rude if you guys are texting while people are talking. And it kind of looks like there's someone up here who's been texting the whole time. This kind of happens a lot. So if you need to text, maybe excuse yourself. This happens like every week. You look like you don't even want to be here. So I went to the Housing Authority meetings where the conversation was the RAD conversion. I am extremely familiar with this. I have a little bit of background in housing, studying housing. And I'm very familiar with portable housing programs, et cetera. You guys need to know what this is. This is privatizing our public housing stock. This is transferring property over. The description of the program by the Housing Board, which you appoint, which is utterly patronage-appointed, these are political insiders. Like, the description of the program was disgusting, it was wrong, and it was insulting to the seniors in the room. And just so you know, I'm keeping my eye on this and I'm not letting this in. There's a lot of us who are keeping an eye on this because there's a lot of shady stuff going on. A lot of potential for shady going on. Because this is, it is a good program on paper. But if you have dodgy people running the program, then it's a problem. And you have dodgy people. So, um, I'd like your suggestion about going back to that updates from the housing authority. But keep in mind, you're only gonna get one side. I would recommend that you meet with some of the tenants. And I just want to make a comment to someone who, about the Park Avenue study stuff and pedestrians. We need a transportation committee because this isn't about trying to figure out how we can move people around vehicles. This is about how we can move vehicles around people. You gotta kind of flip the script on how you're approaching Park Avenue, Mr. Tackney. We need a transportation committee. There are other options. You asked what the other options were. No one's even talked about education, and you haven't really touched on. And then finally, thank you to Deanna for every word that you said was amazing. And City Council President Aramo, I think it's time that you step down. Not just as president, but I think you need to really reconsider whether you're actually doing your job.
Thank you, Austin.
Q. Dineen, I think that you should step down, maybe not step off the council. You're new, you're learning, you're kind of in the shadow of Aramo there.
Thank you, Austin.
But you need to consider stepping down.
Thank you, appreciate your time this morning. Karen Blackburn?
Change your name. Hi, Karen Guinness Blackburn.
Oh, Karen.
From Long Beach, I have a statement, well, so many moments. Attending these city council meetings this year has been like watching the movie Groundhog Day. Citizens ask the same questions of the council during Good Welfare and get vague and incomplete answers. Long Beach is a $100 million a year operation. And he's a qualified, experienced, full-time city manager who is not part of the current administration and a qualified, experienced, full-time deputy city manager or deputy city manager. Your blind trust in experienced staffers has led us to this ten-month period of discovery. That's admirable, but we're tired of it. Each city council member took an oath to represent all of the citizens of Long Beach and that's in our collective best interest. Not your career advancement or your campaign war chest. If you were concerned about the collective interest, residents would have heard about the activities and suggestions of the current Board of Ethics or anything, I mean anything, on best practices for local governments or at least a new impartial ombudsman or consultant to assist the temporary administration during this time. But I mean nothing, I mean nothing, absolutely nothing proactive. All I hear is that we have to wait for the state audit to be done. I've heard city employees grouse during these meetings that it's the same old people who voice their opinion every meeting. I get it, I agree, it does get old. But then, I'm reminded that we live in a democracy and that it's a responsibility of each and every citizen to hold our officials and our government responsible. And that is enough. I'm holding each of you directly responsible. John, Chume, Anthony, Scott, and Anissa. I'm holding you responsible to hire a qualified new city manager as soon as possible. And I assure you, the residents will hold you responsible next November. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Karen.
Hi. Good evening, Karen. I'm with City Board Corrister Street, Long Beach. I am a commissioner on the Housing Authority. And yes, I was put into the position by Mr. Jack Shearman. And I've been there almost four years, or maybe a little over four years, I'm not sure. Time goes by. Anyway, I'm just here to answer a couple of, to make a couple of factual statements about RAD because obviously, it's not your job to know about the program. I know that, I believe that Councilwoman Moore has been educated on the program by some of the people here, which is great. And- Not by some of the people that are about. Oh, okay. All right, I apologize. In any case, you know about it and the rest of you should be informed. And I want to let you know that the executive director Mike Cruz and all of the board members would be very happy and welcome to sit down and discuss the program with you and let you know what it's about. The basics are that, yes, it is privatization, but it's all about the seniors being taken care of. As you admitted and as Ms. Donde admitted, it's all up to the Housing Authority, which is run by the federal Housing Authority. As far as being rushed, the program being rushed, that's absolutely not the case. We've had three meetings already with residents and tried to explain everything over and over again. The last meeting was very well-attended and we felt that we did get through to some of the seniors. Nothing's being rushed. We've explained over and over again. And we have to put in an application to the federal Housing Authority, an application for this program just to hold our place against other housing authorities. We don't know if we're gonna get the application accepted. We don't know if we're gonna get the program. And we have right up until the day we sign any papers to change our mind. So yes, we are still researching it, we're asking questions. We are going to plan to have Housing Authority Federal, I'm sorry, RAD representatives in the buildings to have more meetings. To say this is being rushed, it's absolutely not. I appreciate the seniors coming up. I know why, I know they're upset. And one of the reasons is they got a letter from federal housing, which was very upsetting. And we should have followed up as a board. And I've already asked twice for a letter to be sent out to the seniors saying that that letter represented the worst-case scenario, that you have terrible buildings that need to be turned down, I mean torn down. We might have to, we might have to find other housing. That does not apply to Long Beach. It does not. Our buildings are in very good shape, they have said so. So again, and the fact is, we're, I do not have a personal agenda. I am not slim. And I resent that. And one last thing, yes, one last thing is, it's not a patronage job. I have meetings all the time. The first year, we had meetings two or three times a week. So I give my time and I'm not getting paid for it. I'm a volunteer.
Thank you. Commissioner?
I have one question.
Okay.
You had mentioned an application. I didn't catch the beginning of it. The application has been submitted or it is going to be?
Yes, that's what we had to vote on once we, we had to get it in. We actually had a deadline. We had to get it in just to get it to place.
And how long is the process for?
Oh, it could be six months, it could be, we don't know. We don't know how long the process is. It could be years before it happens.
So Commissioner Tackney's office is gonna reach out to-
Executive Director, yes.
The board, the executive director, and we'll set up a meeting.
Absolutely, we welcome it.
Okay, great.
I just need to follow up with Councilwoman Shearman's question. Again, I look forward to having the meeting. We've done it in the past and it was very successful when we had the meeting several years ago. But just a question about the application. You said that the application has already been submitted to the federal government at this time?
We voted to put in the application. I don't know as of this minute if it's physically been turned in. I can't answer that question.
No, absolutely. So what, in other words, you said that there were only three meetings before this application was sent?
Three or four meetings with the seniors, explained. But it's been discussed since I first got involved. They, we discussed a program coming down the pipe, but not a lot of details.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, they had what we, no, I don't understand.
Good evening.
Good evening. Maureen Bona, East Atlantic Beach. And I'm just, I try to clarify that I'm okay standing up here even though I reside in East Atlantic Beach. Is that right?
Everyone is welcome to the conference.
And speak out of the door.
Yes.
Let that clear up. And just as inside, as I begin my comments, please do not assume that because I am up here speaking that Eddie couldn't or wouldn't have spoken for himself. He would have done so with probably much more passion and elegance than I can muster. But it's time for you guys to hear from me. The issue I want to address is the harassment of Eddie Bona at the last city council meeting. First, he's heckled by one of the city commissioners and then grilled by a council member, that is residents. It baffles me, why do you treat a high school student so disrespectfully? In these past months, this issue has come up twice publicly. And I was warned privately that people were upset that Eddie Bona was speaking because he didn't live in the city of Buffalo. Here you have a young man who has the smarts, who spends his time researching the issues and is prepared to address real issues that face the city. And his only motive is to make the city a better place. Yet you bag her him, not about the ideas and issues he raises, but whether or not he's a resident of Long Beach. And that's true, even though I know at least the majority of you know exactly where Eddie lives. And it's not Long Beach. It's seven blocks from the city line. Trust me, I know what it's like to have these upstart kids stand up and tell us how to fix problems that you all and I and my decision deal with every day. But while these kids may not be as poised and as polished as we would like our speakers to be, they are the future. They are the ones who are gonna solve the systemic problems we who are sitting at podiums like this face. They are the ones who are willing to put in the hard work, to look outside the box and to find solutions. I would think that you would welcome young people interested in government and municipal budget issues, but that just doesn't seem to be the case. I've noticed that not many young people speak at or even attend city council meetings. Maybe they just don't feel welcome enough to share their ideas. Just something to think about. I would ask only that you consider what I've said. You and I, we are the role models. So if you have to, case the smile on your face, do not roll your eyes. And please, no texts me. We are the ones responsible to teach our children and young adults the skills they need to keep Long Beach the wonderful place it is. But that won't happen if they are treated dismissively and without respect. Thank you.
Well, you want to say else, I just want to say that, you know, as a community college professor, I find any statements refreshing. It's what I teach my students to do, to articulate their ideas and to speak with civility, as long as the individual's speaking with civility and engaging people. It's a part of what we teach. And I hope that you'll continue to do that as you continue to assert yourself within the society. And I hope that more young people will continue to get involved because as you just said, they are the future. And I'm sure, I can speak for the other council members here, that we welcome everyone. We don't always have to agree, we can agree to disagree. But that's the whole purpose of community engagement, is to have people come and share. And so thank you for sharing your statement.
I just don't feel that that's, you said that, you say that on behalf of the whole council, and I just don't believe that that's the case. Or that's not what I see to be, and I hope in the future that that will be the case.
Well, then I'll speak for myself. Thank you.
Michael Warrior? Sure, Charlie, sir, come on up. Thank you.
Good evening, Councilman Mike Delory, Long Beach, New York. I want to try something different tonight. I'm going to give handouts, ask you to read the questions. And if that's not comfortable enough, then I will, I'll read the question, perhaps you could answer it. Let's start with the handout. The items highlighted in yellow are just the questions, if you could ask them, I just don't want to use all my three minutes in just questions. Would you prefer that I ask a question and then wait for the answer, or? Oh, let me just, okay, here you go. Number one, did the beach park revenue exceed the budget of $4,325,000 and the LIRR beach charges of $605,000? Paid for 100 of the budget, the reason I mention it now is the beach season's over. Question number two, is overtime under the fire deposit tracking in line with budget? Number three, the budget mentioned LB stat is driving down overtime, tracking beach park numbers, improve police productivity. Is this an accurate account of what we are seeing today? Number four, it's a question about Moody's. My question is, why would Moody's issue a negative outlook? Number five, on page 26 of the budget, it mentions under institutionalizes best practices, are these happening today? You can see items A, B, C, D. If you don't mind, if you could comment on them, that would be appreciated. The last question or comment is, since there are so many projects, would it be beneficial to hire a person with an engineering degree in the DPW in the upcoming future budget year? Last, any changes to this year's AOH parade? Hours, length of time, direction? Number two, discussions about fiscal stress. We have reached, number one, in the wrong direction. We are number one mistake in fiscal stress. Lastly, I read the paper about zoning board and sea point towers. I don't know if you can comment on it, it doesn't look favorable. Thank you.
Okay, in response to your questions, Mr. Warrior. We are, at last, well, we were over $4 million, I don't know if we achieved what, 325, but we are over $4 million, we're still tracking that. The wire road charges, I believe, were around a half a million dollars at last check. But that takes about two months to reconcile throughout the end of the year. Because we have to submit, what happens is, they get a railroad pass that they exchange for a beach case. Then we have to submit that railroad check to the reimbursement. And that just is a time process. But we are going to be very close to the numbers that were projected in the budget. The fire deposit, we broke it down to quarterly with a little seasonal bump, so it's not like equally into quarters. And we are staying within the first quarter, which was July and August, except September, which are pretty much our summer months. We are monitoring overtime very carefully, the council did to get in line, to get the budget under 10%. Did reduce overtime allotments, so I am watching that very carefully. We are on track with the season. Police overtime is up. We're tracking, we do track beach park numbers very, very carefully. And police productivity is monitored very closely, we do monthly activity reports, we compare up to prior years. August had a, almost, from 2012 when I took over to this year, comparing the two Augusts, moved down almost 2,000 miles. Why would Moody's issue a negative outlook? Because we are depleting our fund balance at a very fast pace and we are still bottoming for separation pays. So they are very, very unhappy with that and that's why we have a negative outlook. Until we do something about that. It's institutionalized best practices. I'm not, I don't know, the monthly details vary as to what is, so I'd have to factor on that. Again, overtime is reduced. We, we, the fund balance policy is pretty much, I say no, we're broke. I say no, we're broke. That's pretty much our fund balance. As far as adopting the policy, we're waiting for the state controls report and meeting with the one years that came in and tomorrow. And we're waiting for that as well as the financial restructuring report. And we're hoping to get best practices and best policies from them. We do track all state and federal grants. Again, Commissioner Morango has requested an engineer because we have so many projects. And that's any answer, the budget. He isn't, yes, he is engineer. I don't have those other comments if you?
Commissioner, I can see manager, that's more than I would expect it to be as of tonight, given the fact we've got two roles. I just think that, in a very simple statement, thank you for allowing me, you know, I know I've probably over my time.
Ninety seconds.
Okay, thank you. To be here, it breaks my team.
Oh, Mr. Warrior, just one other thing. I didn't leave after three forty-five, we should receive these numbers because we will be summoning these cases in May. Seasonal cash is home, we did almost a million dollars in the final month. So we should do, we should eclipse these numbers substantially.
Okay, because I heard that the beach revenue, heard, you know, rumor whatever, is that an unsufficient that it is down, that's why I break it up. Well, any elaboration on the controllers meeting that you had mentioned, I know my time is up. Thank you.
I'm Lee Heschel.
I'm Lee Heschel, Long Beach. We have some very good speakers up here tonight lined with questions. I am also reading a statement about the lack of a city manager and the fiscal crisis that we're in. Our previous city manager, Jack Schneerman, was campaigning for a county job since early summer. So it's been well over a year since we have had a permanent city manager. By the way, Jack Schneerman got us into this fiscal mess and now he's the comptroller for Nassau County, let's see how he does there. He lied to us at nearly every meeting, saying how he pulled us out of the hole left by the last administration. Meantime, he continued to bond and borrow for even the most basic city requirements. Our city council members did nothing to stop him. We got a new boardwalk after Sandy, but there are people who are still not home. New York Horizon is asking for their money back. Taxes are rising, our streets are deplorable, our water tower is over 100 years old. Our infrastructure is falling apart and we have no city manager to lead us. I should say permanent city manager. The five members of our city council seem unable to work together. Several of them had seemed stuck on our corporation counsel to take the job of city manager. But he was a man unqualified to be city manager in many ways. There have been many financial and personnel decisions made over time that have been dead for the city. We have employees who hold to or through titles, there's duplication of jobs. There are too many supervisors and superintendents with large salaries. There are too many cars given to employees who don't need them for city responsibilities. Who is negotiating contracts unbeknown to the taxpayer? Who is minding the store? We have several multimillion dollar lawsuits pending and our interim city manager is currently being sued for millions more. Recently, millions of dollars were given as separation payments to people who still work here. They did not separate, but got big payouts. Raises have been given and new positions opened while we are drowning in debt. We have asked for an order to those payouts and the person in charge of that is Schneerman's close friend, Tom DiNathaly, who should recuse himself. Being without a full-time comptroller is reckless when we have all these money problems. The city manager, not the city council, hires the comptroller, so we can't get one until we have a full-time city manager. You can't make this stuff up. We were recently rated the number one New York municipality in fiscal stress. Our Moody's rating is down, way down. And even a former, successful city manager was willing to step in, but the council could not even agree on that. We are a city in trouble and our city council members don't seem to know what to do about it. Both Dana and Karen mentioned a few things to try. Please try them.
Thank you. Please follow along. Hi, good evening.
Hi. This is not the first time, I was twenty-two years, I had a cig. Mr. Ben, let me introduce that. So I'm Barbara Horn, I live at 30 by East Broadway in Long Beach. And I'm very fortunate to own Long Beach Senior Housing. I'd like that you plug the section of the Boot and Welfare segment and I'm hoping that's, that's what I'm here to speak about. So my comments are about RAD, this Rental Assistance Demonstration Program. I'm just going to emphasize one aspect of it. In my understanding, it will cover all public housing in Long Beach. So it will cover all senior buildings, which I'm, again, grateful to be in one, and I was a channel park. And my understanding, again, I'm saying my understanding because I have gone to some of these meetings. And sometimes I think I'm clear on something and then 10 more questions raise. So there are a lot of meetings, but I'm not quite sure how much clarity is happening. And I think that's part of the party because it's a RAD new program. It just comes off of the quarter resident in 2012, so it's always so understanding. My understanding is that the bank that buys into this will have primary overseeing on the program and a lot of data, what happens and what doesn't happen. My understanding also is that, once, we are RAD, we're always RAD, so once RAD, always RAD. So this is a permanent program. So it's not like, well, let's give it a try, oh, well, it's not the best thing for us and then we have to change. So wait a minute, that's, it's a big jump. And I'd like us to make that move with great confidence. I'm hoping that since Long Beach Housing feels a positive way about it, that that's really, you know, what it will be for us. But again, this whole process has raised a series of questions. So my main concern that I'm going to bring forward now, in addition to the fact that this will be a permanent, we can't, I've got this right. Once RAD, always RAD. That the four buildings that are senior, means two senior housing buildings, whether we stay in RAD or not, that they be officially and formally designated as senior buildings. I thought that they were, but now again, I've been led to believe that it's understood. But it's not necessarily a formal official declaration so that it's possible things could change fundamentally to a RAD program. Maybe the city moves out, someone else to move in, I'm not sure. But I would, again, I understand and appreciate it's not the city council's job, it's the Long Beach Senior Housing. But we live here in Long Beach and we love Long Beach and we need a little help. And I know that housing, the housing authority is trying, but I think it's a pretty big deal. I'd just like to throw in two cents on the traffic. I just, coming here, both at national and park and then every support. I just am always watching everybody run across, you know, they get across to the middle, it's like, do I, am I going to make it to the other side? It's so crowded, people running. So I don't know where that falls off the consideration, but maybe we can have less running.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Mr. Warrior Lester?
Warrior Lester, Long Beach, New York. Couple of questions and nobody's mentioned it today, where are we with the city manager search?
Don't go.
Do you have any idea when we will have city manager?
I do not.
No idea? Continue. You have no idea, does anyone have any idea? No, no answer, okay. I noticed in the city manager report?
I was just going to say that there's been a fair amount of activity going on in the last few weeks related, so there's progress being made.
But John, no offense, isn't that what you said like four months ago? Same thing?
I don't remember if I did, but I'm just telling you that there, there's a fair amount of activity going on right now.
Okay, you know, if you guys, not in that view, John, but if you look, it's basically what you've been saying now for months. Lot of activity, making progress. And we still have a city manager.
Well, I just, I want to clarify something. First of all, not only have you had quite a bit of activity in terms of continuing to search for a city manager. But I think you're misstating that we don't have a city manager. We have an acting city manager who's managed the city up until this point. He was unanimously appointed when we all overcat our city manager, but he was elected to another office. He's run the city, we all would like a permanent city manager, but I think it is a little bit disingenuous for you repeatedly saying we don't have a city manager. We have an acting city manager who just, a second ago, or maybe five minutes ago, answered a slew of questions regarding specific details about the budget. And I think that, I think if we're going to engage in this discussion, you should probably make it clear what you're saying and be a little more honest.
You're completely right, I mean, we do have a city manager. I meant a permanent city manager, no offense, Mr. Warrior, but we do have a city manager. But partly the problem, whom you had to see this tonight. Over the past week, we've lost a major lawsuit against the Havenmans, well, the Havenmans against us. Where now we, it looks like we're going to have two 20-story buildings in this town. We also got voted or put in on the comptrollers list as the worst-run municipality in the state of New York. Or under the highest financial stress. Not that financial stress and worst-run is necessarily the same thing, but to me, it sounds like it. And what was the city manager's report about? It was about the Army Corps, Irish Day, the Fall Festival, and the City Calendar pictures. The people in the city want to know about the major names. I mean, it's nice to know about City Calendar pictures, but we're talking about lawsuits. We're talking about lawsuits that could bankrupt this city. And we're being told about Irish Day and Fall Festivals. Now, a permanent city manager would be addressing these things, first of all. Now, a permanent city manager would be addressing these things, first of all. Because he realizes, a permanent city manager would realize the importance of these things to the citizens. And another thing I did want to question was, he said that we're still finalizing the beach revenue. The beach ended 30 days ago. Why is the revenue that helped to track?
He was talking about a little amount of railroad revenue.
No, he wasn't. No, he wasn't. That was different revenue. Continue. I'm waiting for the answer.
I don't know.
Does anyone know? I mean, we're talking millions of dollars. Well, 30 days, it shouldn't take that long. I can understand the line of revenue, long on the railroad revenue, but our revenue should not take that long. And finally, I have to say, the way Mr. Verona was treated last week was despicable. And I think you owe, not necessarily you guys, because you guys say you're doing it and the person that did it wasn't here, isn't here now. But I think he's owed an apology because that's not the right way to talk to somebody who comes up to speak. Thank you. Make another one.
Any questions?
We've got to go around, so it's going to take a little bit because we're actually a fire hazard. Well, collected in the room. So give me two seconds.
Let's take notice, buddy. They're making room.
Fire hazard.
Fire hazard.
I'm going to be lighting mine tonight and handout, hand up. Davey? I'll ask mine. This is President Long Beach, New York. I have three questions or three points of... One, I hope that everyone got their FEMA alert today. If not, please, like the Long Beach Community Organization active disaster page and we will tell you how to sign up. Putting on another tack. I sent an email and I haven't heard back from anyone regarding the Consumer Protection Committee of continuing to apply under that one. I didn't see she, because I'm looking at a position that was posted in-house and it's not even on our organizational chart.
Do you want to talk about the direction? Give me two seconds here, I will pull it up.
The Director of Operations for the City of Long Beach. As I read this, it seems to be the city manager position. And it's not even on our organizational chart. The resident is directly at the top. Is this position in the budget? What is the salary? And will this hire replace the acting city manager? And is this kind of redundant? Yes or no? Your turn.
The line is in the budget to answer that question. The other questions, I'm not sure I can answer.
But this position's not in our chart or in the organizational chart?
It doesn't exist. It's not, we haven't even touched it yet.
So this is a brand new, but it's never existed before. No one's ever held this position. We need to get rid of this in the past, save money.
Why is it not in the organization chart? Why do they...
And regarding the Consumer Protection Committee?
You can answer.
Consumer protection services are provided by the Nassau County Department of Consumer Affairs.
No, not within the city charter that we have. I'm reading that, finding it's an excellent job to read it, right? Because why is this Nassau County Consumer Affairs being on our city chart? Maybe I dreamed it, but I was reading the city chart. All right, thank you very much.
All right.
Right, 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 we go.
That's it for this evening? Thank you. Please get on stage.